Okay, go ahead.
Okay, alright, I'd like to call the September fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the town in this unit and planning, boarding, zoning commission to order. Mister Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mister Laflamme. Mister Laflamme?
Here.
Mister Scrubby Tennis?
Here.
Mister Khan?
I'm here.
Mister McPartland?
Here.
Mister Darpino?
Here.
Mister Oster?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Here.
Ms. Shenfield?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
President.
Okay, thank you, Mister Henry. Alright, we've got a couple sets of minutes to discuss tonight. The first set of minutes being the July twenty seventh, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mister Chairman.
As moved by Mister McPartland. Do I have a second?
A second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now seconded by Mister Laflamme. Uh, any changes or corrections for the July twenty seventh meeting minutes? I have none. Okay, nobody? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the July twenty seventh, twenty twenty meeting minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing no one oppose will approve the July twenty seventh, twenty twenty meeting minutes. Uh, for the August tenth, twenty twenty meeting minutes, I'd like to make a motion to table those meeting minutes. Uh, we received some input from a resident. Uh, it's gonna need some time to review that input with the planning office, possibly looking at the uh, the video, so I'd like to uh, table the August tenth, twenty twen- I'd make a motion to table the August tenth, twenty twenty meeting minutes. So I have a second on that.
Seconded.
And a second by Mister Oster. Any discussion? Okay, basically, that's, that's the summary. We got some input later today. I just got a chance to look at it, so uh, um, all those in favor of tabling the twenty, uh, August tenth, twenty twenty meeting minute, minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, anyone opposed? Okay, hearing no one oppose, we'll table those minutes and we'll get a chance to update those and we'll have those in our packet at next meeting. Thank you very much, everybody. Moving on, uh, we have no public hearings tonight. So we'll move right to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the town in this unit? We'll have them uh, basically talk, uh, state your name and address. And Laura, who do you have queued up?
Um, I believe it's just our, uh, Pasquale area ten- tonight. Alright, would you like to go? Alright, you're muted.
No, no- nothing. Okay, no.
Oh, okay, you're just listening, okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Your last name for me. I'm sorry, I always mess it up. How do you pronounce your? Pascarello, Pascarello. Okay, I will not.
Okay, just for the record, Laura.
Say this evening, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Laura, for the record, is there any email communications or letters received for privilege of the floor?
No, none.
Okay, alright, hearing no one that wishes to be heard or any communications, uh, we'll close privilege of the floor. And again, we'll move on. We have no unfinished business tonight. And we have no new business tonight, so we'll move right to discussion items. First discussion item being, twenty-three zero-one Knot Street TD Bank Site Plan Application for New Signage. Um, uh, that the packet, uh, the information was included in our packet. I did have an opportunity to look at it, but it looks like we have Mister, Meisner, uh, uh, from Saxton Sign representing the applicant. Is that correct, Mister Meisner?
Yep.
So, um, I guess it'd be, uh, uh, if you want, maybe you can just summarize, uh, if you're prepared. If not, I can, uh, what, what you're requesting there. Um, obviously, some of the signs aren't in compliance, and then we can have some discussion on that from the board.
Yep, so what they're looking for is, uh, two of the signs on the building are not illuminated. They're two-inch pan signs with a half-inch acrylic letters on them. And it's just gonna portray their logo. And, um, they're basically the same square footage, just a little bit proportionally different. Um, instead of, uh, three-six by five, they're gonna be, uh, four foot by four foot five. Um, they're like a quarter square foot bigger in size. That's about it. And, uh, you got one on the front of the building, the entrance, and one on the other side of the building. And they'll be the same illumination, the same everything, you know, the down lighting from before. And then you got your death most, which they were going from two square feet before to your four-point-three square feet, and they're a little higher in height. Um, they're not illuminated, just a two-inch deep, and, um, they have, they have their logo on it as well, and sure, you know, the directions they go. And, on the pilot or the road sign, it's just their little panel will be changed. I don't think they're doing anything with that, actually.
Yeah, there's no change there, it looks like.
You know, and then they're just gonna, um, update their signs, you know, on their parking slot signs, their logo. Where they, um, you know, above their ATM, their night slot, and then their, their pool parking signs. Which are basically gonna be like, like, for like, basically.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mister Meisner. Um, I guess the big, one of the bigger questions, I think you just mentioned that the lighting is not gonna change. It's basically, uh, uh, the TD, uh, instead of TD Bank, it's just a TD logo, logo, and that's what's primarily changing. Some of the dimensions obviously vary from the, the pre-existing signs. Uh, but the lighting will not change at all, and any of the signs that are lit, is that correct?
Nope, the lighting will not change.
Okay. So, um, I know Laura can always pull up the packet and, uh, let, display it. Uh, if I could just summarize and tell me if I'm wrong, but bottom line is, is that there's a couple of TD logo signs, uh, it looks like two of them, they're facade signs. Um, basically, they're about, you know, per the planning department's, uh, analysis, about point, point-three square foot larger. Uh, but one of the concerns is that when you have a logo without any other information on there, the logo can only consume of, up to thirty percent of the sign, and this is, my understanding is, uh, slightly greater than thirty percent. So that's signs number two and sign number three. And then for the directional signs, which there's three of those, they're point-four-two square feet, uh, larger than the existing, by again, by the analysis from the planning department, and they're about six inches higher. So that's, um, you know, what this board has to basically discuss and, and see if we're comfortable with those, uh, slight modifications of those signs. Um, I think it's a great thing that, you know, that the lighting hasn't changed, so we don't need to go there with any internally lit versus externally lit. Um, but the bottom line is, uh, whether this board is okay with the, uh, uh, the increase in sign, size. Slight increase in size. Mister Khan?
Mister Chairman, I have a question. So i- 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 is there a general description of why the sign changes? What's, um, going on? Did the bank change its logo? Did, you know, what, what's prompting the sign changes now?
I guess I'd let Mister Meisner answer that, if he could.
They're, uh, they're rebranding, and they're doing more than just banking, so they're, they're more than just a bank, I guess, so they're putting their name out there as just TD. They don't wanna, they don't wanna advertise it just a bank. They do more than just banking, I guess. So, they're just going with a simple TD now.
Okay, like, what's an example of one thing that's beyond banking that they do?
I guess they do investing. Um, I, I know, um, I don't know if they do, uh, um, insurance or not, but I know, like, Pioneer, we're doing, like, Pioneer Bank is changing their name to Pioneer, because they do investing as well, and they also have some insurance as well going with them. So they do more than just banking.
Okay.
And a lot of banks are doing that now, I guess. They're just dropping the word "bank."
Okay. And, uh, Laura, actually, this is a question for you, and I said, I saw you wrote that you had looked in the archives and, so, I mean, you know, it's obvious until the question gets, or it's not obvious until the question gets raised, but eight signs? For a single building?
Um, so actually, af- after the packet was sent out on Friday, um, Linda and I did discuss it one more time, and we found an old variance for Evergreen Bank. Um, but it's a very weirdly written variant. It's very weird. Um, I didn't wanna confuse the package with it. I don't think it, it is relevant. Um, like, the total square footage was way over fifty square feet, and I think it was for a completely different sign package. This one, um, um, the, I mean, you don't need a variant for the number of directional signs, so the only variance or waiver that you really need is that neither of those, well, the one-fronted fronts on Knot Street, but really neither of those places where this, where the facade signs are is facing an internal street. Um, well, the one that faces Balltown Road. So we were actually looking for a variant for that one. That's not the variance that was granted. It was a side, a sign waiver, and we really didn't agree with the way the code was interpreted during that variant, so it doesn't really have any bearing on this, but, um, when, when we say five signs, the directional signs really don't count on number of signs, so it's just the two facade signs.
Okay.
Are, are, are other municipalities going through the same thing right now, too, with their T- with their TD banks? With their TDs, I guess?
I think so. Um, you know, we actually saw this, it's been a little while now, but we saw it on the bank down in Mansion Square there. Um, they changed the, all of their signs to a logo, the, the X-Man, they called it. I can't even remember what the name of that bank is. I know what the logo looked like.
Oh, that's Berkshire Bank.
That's Berkshire, yeah.
Berkshire, yeah.
I guess, man, I don't have other teams. I mean, it seems like it shouldn't be that big of a deal, but like, I'm just kinda like, just curious whether there's been any, anything else in any other municipality where they've said, "No, you can't do that."
I, I have mo- uh, Mister Oster, this is Mister Henry. Um, I happened to drive through Saratoga over the weekend, and I think I saw the TD logo on a bank in Saratoga, for what that's worth.
Yeah. I guess it just seems to me like this is kinda how they, they're market themselves, and obviously, we don't want to be, you know, completely just garish and, but this, it just seems like a, I don't know, minor thing unless I'm just missing something.
If you go on Google Maps as well, um, if you look, like, I found one on Central Ave, and it shows, at least on the, the updated images, they've already done the transfer and they've done the updated signs, just, I did it for myself just to get a better view of it. I mean, the TD is definitely large. Uh, but it gives you a better look if you go on the Google Maps.
Yeah, one of the comments I would have is that, you know, Laura, even in her time tenure here at the town, is that we've received a lot of, uh, concern from, uh, businesses within either Shop Right Plaza, based on their location, not really fronting, uh, Balltown Road and, and Knot Street East there. It's been difficult for, uh, some of the businesses, so we've been kind of, um, I don't wanna say lenient, but we've been trying to work with them, understanding the, the constraints that they have. In fact, if you, I hung a right onto, off of Balltown, off, uh, onto Knot Street East there, and just trying to drive by the TD, uh, to take a look at it, and leave me with the, with the trees and everything, it's, it's not really that visible, so I can kinda understand the, the need for the, uh, the number of signs, and, and of course, the number of signs are already pre-existing, so there's really not a change. It's just a matter of whether we're okay with the size of the TD logo and the slightly higher mon- uh, directional signs. Um, and I, again, I think it's minimal. Uh, we could always ask the applicant to see if they could come into compliance by shrinking them down a little bit, but I'd leave that up to the board. Um, in general, I think I could go either way. Uh, I'm, I'm pretty good with what the, uh, applicant has submitted personally. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Same, um, the, the Chase sign package, which I just took a look at, um, included a, um, large facade sign over the main entrance that was fourteen feet by two feet. Um, that included the letters Chase, um, so it wasn't entirely comprised of the logo. However, the logo appears to be at least two foot square. Um, so it seems comparable in size to the TD logo.
Right, and the zoning districts are different, obviously. This is, is in the Town Center Overlay District, and that's in the, with the, uh, highway commercial, I believe. Um, but it might be a slight difference in waivers required or sizes allowed.
Shopping Center.
Shopping Center.
See, yes, commercial shopping or whatever.
Shopping, yeah.
That's it, yeah. So I, so Mister McPartland, I appreciate that. So bottom line is, what I'm hearing is, is that it doesn't seem like a, uh, too far-out request. Uh, and it seems like it's in keeping with, uh, some of the other signage in, uh, the town. It doesn't appear to be a detriment to the Town Center Overlay District because it's not that visible, and, but again, I'd love to hear any comments that the board has, uh, or any concerns the board may have. And if no one has any concerns, then I would ask, uh, A, that we have a project lead. If somebody would like to, um, you know, notify Laura or myself. Uh, and if we're all okay with it, we could ask for a resolution, uh, granting approval or whatever waivers are required uh, for this sign package at our next meeting, which would be, uh, October fifth. Anybody have any concerns with that?
No.
I do have a comment.
Comment? Yes, please?
Yes. Um, investment bank isn't a new concept. A lot of banks have always had an investment component, so I'm puzzled at the request. And do we really want the president of just having logos rather than something that clearly identifies what the entity is? To me, it's less clear. And if you're just casually looking for something and didn't know the name, I think it would be self-defeating. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, I think that's a corporate decision, and they've hopefully done that analysis that it's not gonna hurt their business by going to just TD versus TD Bank. So I, I guess I would leave it to the business to make that decision.
Well, I was thinking more in terms of public safety, that public should be able to identify the business they're looking for.
No.
It's a brand, it's a brand logo. It, it's the business. It is the business.
TD. Okay. Any other discussion at all?
Um, I, I do have one clarification question, Laura. I- i- in the narrative you wrote up, for the, um, directional signs, it, it seems there are some waivers that are required, too, right? The point-four.
High end, I think, high end. Clark actually did it.
Yes, it's just higher and point-four-two square feet larger.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, look, I mean, I think the board knows this, right? So my default position always is, we should get signs to conform. I think I could understand on the facade signs with thirty percent, uh, of the logo, given it the lo- given that the content of the logo is reduced now to effectively two letters. Um, what does it take to get the directional signs to conform? It's six inches lower and point-four-two square feet less.
Okay. Mister Meisner?
Um, the directional signs, I mean, that's what they've been doing at all their banks, is this size here. But I mean, if they gotta go smaller, they can do it. They, they did it to a bank in, um, Vermont. They were okay with all the building signs, but their footage was, they were allowed with two square feet for the directionals. You know, that's what they gotta do, they can do that.
So, I mean, we haven't changed the code, but we have been a little lenient with the height of directional signs because sometimes there is vegetation and stuff in front of them. Um, but I think that generally, we've been a little more lenient with the height.
Okay, well, that, that's a good comment, Mister, um, Khan. You know, if, uh, if the applicant can come in as close as compliance, uh, with no, uh, you know, uh, hardship, uh, to the, uh, to the business, we should always try to do that, and that's a point well taken. So,
Right.
You know, so Mister Meisner, if you, if, if there's a way to get the directional signs the same as that's existing, which is four point, or what's allowed, point-four-two square feet smaller and six inches lower, then you wouldn't require us to, uh, grant you a waiver for that and, uh, basically be just a, uh, a swap of the existing um, uh, with the new style and logo, uh, without any waivers required. Uh, Mister Khan pointed out that he's okay, and I, I believe I am. It sounds like the rest of the board may be with the, uh, uh, just the TD logo being, you know, greater than thirty percent, which is allowed. Uh, but again, if you can make that sign, it's a point-three, uh, square foot larger, if it, if, if it's reasonable to squeak the dimensions without causing hardship because, you know, dimensionally it doesn't work, or the materials aren't available that size, uh, if you can do that, um, and, you know, it just makes it, uh, nice to be compliant.
Okay.
So, I guess what I would ask, uh, and again, the board can jump in here, is if you could take a look at that, you can work with the planning office, and see if that's something you can do, right? Again, with no hardship to, to, uh, because it's not practicable to do, be based on material dimensions or um, materials that are available, the sign company. If you can do that, and then we'll, we'll have a resolution. And if there's no waivers required, you know, it's, it's easy. It's a slam dunk. If you can't do that, just do the best you can, and let us know what you need. Uh, and it sounds like the board would be flexible, thirty percent, uh, for the TD size, and possibly even for the overall size for the, uh, facade signs. It's, they are only point-three square foot difference, so I don't, I don't see much of a difference there personally. And if you can do that, um, we'll have a resolution drafted for the next meeting and, uh, get you on your way. That sound reasonable, everybody?
Yeah, sounds good.
Alright, and then, uh, if you could take a look at that, and again, our next meeting is, uh, October fifth. You could submit, uh, any changes or, excuse me? Mister Oster, do you have anything? I'm sorry. Uh, so, yeah, so if you could, uh, submit something to the planning department, either saying, "Hey, I can meet the sizes," and, or I can't, and here's why, and we will definitely have a resolution for the October fifth meeting, and, uh, if there's any minor changes to come through that night, we can be a little bit flexible at the resolution, uh, to work through things, but I think we can get there on October fifth, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
That's good with you, Laura, and everybody else? Okay, we're all set for a resolution. I guess you can just nod your heads, and we'd be good with that. There's pretty a lot of head nodding going on, so. Alright. Alright, good. So thank you, Mister Meisner, for, uh, seeing if you can squeeze that, and thank you, Mister Khan, for holding us accountable as usual.
Yeah, and, 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 and I mean, it, again, it's our principles of, of staying as best as we can within code, and, and I think, given that the logo is letters, and it's a drastic change, at least for the TD Bank facade signs, I think this will make the business, you know, better recognized in the building. The, the directional signs are obviously close proximity signs, right, and they're, they're, they're kinda high level with people driving, walking. Um, so I think, I think those could be within conformance.
Yep, yep. And obviously, as always, we want the business to be successful and stay there, so.
Yep.
And we'll do what we can, okay? Alright, anything else? Or any questions? Mister Meisner, any questions at all?
Nope, no more, good.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on. Uh, to twenty-seven, twenty-seven twenty-one Balltown Road, Aqueduct Innual Hospital. So we have a site plan application to convert, uh, the existing, um, Innual Hospital to six apartment, uh, multi-family unit. And we have, uh, Mister Ritmo, the applicant, and we have Mister Dedon, uh, Dave is, uh, his agent, real estate agent, online, so, uh, we, again, we received, uh, some information in our packet. And, um, what I guess I'd like to do is, I don't know if Mister Ritmo or, um, his, uh, agent would like to discuss what they're thinking about there? Would be glad to hear it.
I'm, I'm here. Are you here, Bruce? Can anyone hear me?
We can hear you, yes, and Bruce, as a Bruce. He was here, he might not, might not be off mute.
Okay, yeah, so basically, um, I just wanna use the existing structure. Um, there's three units currently upstairs, and I just wanna take Doctor Pike's old office and convert it into three, um, two-bedroom apartments downstairs. Um, I wanna remove the, the dog kennels out back, and just kinda flatten them and grade it out. Um, I mean, that's pretty, pretty much cut and dry as I can get it, really.
Yep.
I'm, I'm not making any, um, any expansions to the building. I'm gonna do, uh, you know, I'm gonna put new siding and a little bit of stone veneer on the front, but that's all I really have in, in the plans for that. I plan on leaving like, those big columns out front. Um, yeah, I mean, that's it.
Right. And, uh, we'll have to, yeah, well, obviously, this is the first, uh, time we heard about it tonight, so basically, it's for discussion on the board. Uh, since this is not a permitted use in the RP zoning district, uh, we would have to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And you'll have to seek a use variance in order to do a multi-family unit within the RP zoning district. In the RP zoning district, you know, it's, uh, single-family homes, uh, professional, uh, and medical, professional business and medical offices. There's a few other uses, like, uh, childcare, places of worship. So multi-family is not one. Um, um, this piece of property, uh, we, we have had discussions. Uh, I'm not sure if the board was previous to this. I know that Laura and I have been. There have been, uh, other people that were interested, and, in fact, I think we did have somebody coming from the board to talk about, um, um, doing a tear-down and, and building, uh, an apartment. Uh, I would say complex or units there in the past. Uh, but I think of the board's, uh, feeling at that point in time is that it was, uh, high intensity or too intense that the proposals that we had, and it, uh, was not pursued by the applicant, possibly based on, you know, our, our discussion and feedback to the applicant. Uh, this one's a bit difference, different since, um, uh, you're utilizing the existing building and, um, you know, taking care of some of the problems eyesores that we've had there, uh, and, you know, concerns from the neighborhood regarding its current use, which is, uh, non-conforming but, uh, pre-existing committed, uh, uh, allowable use. Um, uh, one question I guess I would have for the planning department, and maybe, uh, Laura, is if, um, uh, Mister, uh, when Doctor Pike left the business, I guess the clock started then, um, it's, uh, uh, time to use its non-conforming, uh, permitted use. Is that true?
That is true. Um, tip- typically, we require all non-conforming businesses to renew in January. Um, and so, like, the confirmation that the business is no longer there comes when they, when they don't renew. Um, and so we haven't gotten to that. We know a letter this January yet, but, yes, they have a year, you, once the uses have been, and you have a year that you can restart it, and after that, um, you can't.
So ideally, I won't speak for the planning board, but, you know, an ideal situation would be that, uh, Mister Ritmo, you came in and said, "Hey, I, um, I'd like to put a professional or medical office in there, and by the way, I don't need the dog kennels, so there won't be any concerns with the neighborhood." And, uh, you know, you have three apartments upstairs, and, and then that would be kind of a win-win, you know, because it would be conforming, um, basically, um, because that's what's in there now, the three apartments, so you just continue that use. Um, Laura, since it has three apartments, or may, or maybe Ms. Kim, since there is three apartments up there, is that considered a use, and is a use variance required? Because that's already, uh, being allowed as an apartment complex?
So those, um, those units aren't really the issue. It's that you can't take an existing non-conforming use and change it into another non-conforming use? So that's the downstairs. I would say that the top stairs, uh, of the upstairs, if, if we had done some research on it, I don't believe that those units have been rented in over a year. Um, so technically, I think that they probably don't fall under, you know, the ability to be rentals now, but I, I mean, if we're looking at it holistically, I don't necessarily think that you have to split hairs between the top and the bottom. The use variance is to allow six units in that, in that building, instead of a, a veterinary office, I think is really where you're going with what you're looking at now.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mister Khan.
If somebody else raised their hands, no? Okay, um, how many, um, people are each of these apartment units going to be holding? Are they like two bedrooms, single family?
Yeah, so there's. Um, there's, there's one existing one-bedroom, there's, uh, one existing two-bedroom, and there's one existing two-bedroom upstairs, but it's pretty large, so I was gonna make it a three-bedroom, and then the downstairs units were gonna be two-bedroom, so, four two-bedrooms, one one-bedroom, and one three-bedroom.
So, we're likely talking about a total of maybe four, five, six, six or seven cars, potentially?
Yeah.
So what does the parking situation there look like? I'm looking, I'm looking at the map that was submitted, but it's kinda hard for me to tell.
Yeah, I mean, we would, uh, Mister Khan, we, as part of the site plan, if the zoning board of appeals were to grant a use variance, you know, we would address the parking. We would look at the parking requirements for a multi-family, and we would ensure that the parking was adequate. If it wasn't adequate, the applicant would have to address it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chairman Walsh, it was, the, the, the parking was a piece of it. I was just trying to get back to what, you know, what, um, okay, I'll, I'll say it as plainly as it is, what, what traffic gets generated by this use. Uh, coming right out onto Balltown, which, you know, for me, it's the, obviously, the number of cars, trips, right, without necessarily thinking about a traffic study right now, but.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would say probably no more than a veterinary clinic would, would be.
I'm, I'm sure it's much less than the veterinary clinic, right? So when we look at the traffic generated for apartment units, when you look in that, that manual that the people look at, it's not typically any higher than the any higher than the units themselves, it's like one in the peak AM and PM hours. So, I mean, if you're if you're going from a business practice and you're going down to six units, I mean, worst case scenario would be that you have two cars per unit, all leaving at eight o'clock, so you're talking about twelve cars, you know, in a in a AM or P, and that's it, versus like people in and out all day.
Yeah, I'd agree, I'd agree, Laura, if you recall, I know I drove by there a lot, I mean, it got pretty well jammed up, in fact, as we, as we know, there are parking on Schwaber, the employees, because they didn't have enough room to support the um, the business there.
Yeah, and there was a lot of drop-offs early in the morning when that business was there because of the doggy daycare. So, I mean, I drive, I drive by that every day on my way to work, that's my route, and um, there's easily like twelve cars in that in that parking lot in the morning.
Mister, Mister Chairman, oh, come on, continue.
I was just summarizing, so we don't anticipate a big traffic impact there.
Not for this proposal.
No.
I mean, we talked before about narrowing the curb, because like what kind of happens when it was a veterinary clinic was people would kind of pull in in two different ways, because it was almost like a circle. And so, like, sometimes their bumpers would be hanging out on top of them, and then sometimes it's not really clear on the sides, like where those parking spots were. So like, narrowing down those curb cuts and delineating the parking spots, I think is probably important for safety, and if we're looking at our multi-family code, it's something for you guys to consider, typically, it would require one parking space and one covered parking space. And that, you know, may or may not be feasible without adding a whole lot of impervious surface um, to this property, which we looked at before, which becomes difficult. So, um, it's something to think about, we probably, I think, how many spaces are delineated on the map? Are the parking spaces on the maps? I zoom in. I know we have, um, the this map doesn't show the parking spaces.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you can see spaces on that map, Laura, huh?
There is one of this, I think Doctor Pike did, because some of the spaces that are actually striped are striped in the right of way. Um, so we probably do just want to get a sense of, like, if you could face all the spaces, you know, in and change the curb cuts a little, you know, can you get twelve, I think twelve is probably the magic number, if you can, and then the other question is, um if there's a way to put them covering over some of them or not.
Yeah, so Mister Ritmo, um, for your information, so those are the kinds of things that we would look at if you, if the ZBA were to grant the use variance, you know, the parking ingress and egress uh from the parking lot to make sure that, you know, they can pull out safely. Um, you know, so there'd be more details that would be required, so more more engineering would be required on your behalf in order to move the application forward, assuming the use variance was granted. So, um, but that's just, that's just part of doing business, right, so we gotta look at it. Um, you know, again, if you get the use variance and will, you know, come through parking, number of parking spots, striping, uh whether or not they need to be covered, you know, ensuring possibly with conditions that the uh dog kennels get tore down and and regrade it. Um, those types of things, you know, uh, and then, of course, there's whatever building regulations, New York State Building Code or Niskieta Building Code in order to, uh, you know, uh, implement apartments, you know, from a fire safety, like, safety standpoint, which is standard anyway, right? So, all those things we, you'd have to come through as part of this uh application in the future. Um, one one question I have for you, Mister Ritmo, is that are you thinking or contemplating about uh in the future adding another building to the rear? Uh, possibly sharing the driveway in order to uh maximize a potential profit from this uh um piece of land?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I I can't beat around the bush, obviously, as an investor, I would love to, you know, um maximize any of the uses the of the property as I could. One thought that ran through my mind, um, I mean, obviously, it make, it doesn't even matter right now, but possibly turning the do- back portion into a um, a park. And to, um, you know, possibly get the neighbors on board with allowing more buildings going up.
Yeah, now, we've had app, like you said, now, I don't know if we've had applications or at least discussions with uh um, higher intensity uses, so one of the thing is, if right before, what's in front of us right now, the planning board is basically uh, you know, an application to convert the existing non-conforming business into a multi-family unit. If you're uh thinking of uh adding another complex, again, to increase the number of units, that would be a different application. So if you move forward with this application, and the use variance is granted, and you go to six units, there's no guarantee um, that there there would be an approval for an additional building, you just have to be aware of that, we'd have to go through the process, and you you may not get it. Uh, so if economics dictate that you need to have the second building or another additional building to make this uh financially work for you, that's something that you need to work through, okay?
Yes.
Hey, Mister Chairman, I wonder if I could also raise a point, um, I don't really understand the design layout of the building, and I'd really like to see some schematic layout of of the units. I mean, typically, it's a double-loaded corridor with units on either side, but we have six. We have three and three, so it would be good to see how you're gonna perform this adaptive reuse, to see that the layouts work. And quite honestly, this looks like a stick frame, wood wood building. I'm just concerned about its useful life, its durability, so I'm interested in knowing what you're gonna do in terms of rehab, scope of work. And uh, the improvements that are are projected, and I'm gonna want to see layout, because I can't quite get my head around how to get the six units in the building, I know you've got three upstairs, but I'd like to see what lays out.
Yeah, that's no problem, obviously, if we move forward, I would, I would provide a floor plan, um basically, just planned on doing, you know, side load for the first floor. Um, if you have the site plan in front of you, there's that sidewalk that goes continuous on the right side of the building. Um, and basically, you know, the front apartment you'd enter in the front door. There's a side door existing, um, that would be one unit, and then there'd be another door towards the back to basically stack from front to back, um, with a small corridor of stairs to the upstairs three units. So, so, um, basically, there would be no corridor for the bottom floor units, it would be, you know, entrance from the outside.
Three independent outside entrances.
Correct, upstairs would be the only shared.
So, I think one of the reasons that this is on for discussion is to just get a sense, um, of like you know, where we would land for the use, um, I mean, we definitely, I think, had a lot of complaints from the previous non-conforming use, but it was allowable, and, um, you know, the the complaints came from houses that were built after, so fair or unfair, I mean, it it was allowed to be what it is, but I think as far as traffic and noise goes, if you're just looking strictly at taking a veterinary business and turning it into six apartment units, I would think that is probably a less intense non-conforming use. Um, some of the things we'd have to think about, which you talked about, is, you know, it's allowable in the RP to have it be a single family, that probably doesn't make sense for that building, or like a medical professional uh office. Um, we we had asked the last time that we saw those people, like, can't you just put a medical, a medical office there, and maybe the economics or the market doesn't work? Um, but I I guess, like, if, I don't know if you guys just kind of want to give feedback on the idea of converting that from you know, a veterinary office into a multi-family, and if that's something you would be willing to consider, if you're looking at all these site plan details.
Okay, so 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 before I answer that question, Laura, just one last question before we get to what you just raised. Uh, to what Chairman Walsh said earlier, Mister Ritmo, does your business model work if you left it as a RP usage? As a residential professional usage, with some kind of office on the first floor and the units as they are in the second?
I would have to get a lot of money for uh uh a tenant for downstairs. So, um, is it, is it worth me ripping out all of the veterinary clinics and or the veterinary, you know? Because they got bat tubs and all sorts of stuff, so I'd basically have to gut it and turn it into, you know, um a vanilla box, basically, and hope a tenant can come in, or I'd have to get another vet, which is you know, I think we all know that nobody wants another veterinary clinic in that space. Um, so for me to rip it out and do more construction to turn it into another place, no, I I don't believe that there is, um any profit in that.
Yeah, now, Mister Ritmo, just if I may, so to Mister Khan's point, one option too, and I think you have to be prepared, because the Zoning Board of Appeals could ask this type of questions, is if you you're talking about six units, what if uh five of the units were apartments? And one of the units was a professional office, in other words, not a veterinary, and it could be a a business office, which is allowed in the RP zoning district. Um, then it would be more of a uh mixed-use building versus uh just a multi-family. Which, again, uh, isn't perfect, but it's probably more toward the conforming uh for the RP uh zoning district, though. So that would be an option.
Yeah, that would be an option, but um, I don't, I don't think I would, I don't, I don't know if I would move forward, to be honest. Um, I'd probably just, you know, let Doctor Pike run a kennel there, because the, I I have, I have a plan in my mind that that is the most profitable for me after running numbers. Um, so I guess for me to attack the project at full force, I I'd probably want the full six units, to be honest, otherwise, I'd probably just walk away.
Yeah, and that's your prerogative, I'm just, you know, we're just throwing it out there for food for thought. Uh, but you, but again, but my point is that they do get, grant the use variance, and if six, if the business model with six units don't work, you can't guarantee that you'll have another building there, because it it has to be approved by this board, and you know, and that's, and that's an expansion. Uh, and and that could be uh subject to uh some feedback from the neighbors, or, you know, as Mister Khan mentioned, you know, the increase in traffic, you know, and uh, and I don't know where this board would stand on on that, um
Yeah.
Uh, expansion of use, so, um, right, so right now, what's in front of us is just a six-unit, uh, multi-family apartment building. Okay?
Yeah, so
Correct, yeah.
A- a- and so just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I I'm basically, um, you know, just coming to you guys to see you, what your take is on this, because obviously, I don't want to move too much farther, if it's not, if it's something that's unlikely to happen on my behalf.
Yep, well, I'll give you my feedback, and which I'm always glad to do for and share with the board, is that, uh, you know, to Laura's point, uh, was, uh, we had some some problems, even though it was um, uh, within the um, uh, purview, and it was okay for the veterinarian to be there, because it was pre-existing before those homes, um, but a six-family, a six-family, multi-family apartment unit would be less intense, uh, and if it were to clean up the site and get rid of the kennels, um, and, you know, we just restructure the parking, the ingress, egress, I think it could work, and I think the the neighborhood, but again, the neighbors would have the opportunity to uh give us their opinion, I think it could work. Uh, and and since it's uh surrounded uh to the left by single families, and on the right's a single family, um, um, it it could probably, uh, probably work out, as long as you could justify the use variance.
Okay, a- a- and I'd like to speak to, so I'm not too far away from where Chairman Walsh is, but Mister Ritmo, you had said earlier, and I don't know if you feel bold and courageous enough at this point to do it, but if you've got a plan for the rest of the property, i- i- it would help us quite a bit to work with you to actually see what exactly it is you have planned there.
Gotcha.
Because, because, you know, take Chairman Walsh's point, um, you know, carefully, you know, ach- achieving a, which could be a a more desirable state relative to the six units you're looking for, and getting approvals for those, I'm not speaking for any other board or even for this board, but assuming that that would be favorable because of all the arguments or mention about less intense the usage. It it doesn't guarantee that your vision for the whole property would actually, could actually happen, so I I would feel if I had a sense of that, then we could actually have a richer discussion.
Yeah, okay.
I'll add my support for the proposal as well, um, but I'd also like to echo what Mister Scribby Tennis said. I think it's hard to make a uh recommendation, and I think it would certainly inform, um, this board and the ZBA, and through the use variance process to have uh, at least a preliminary um schematic of the floor plan and a site plan.
Yeah, and it doesn't have
Yeah, you, sorry.
No, go ahead, Mister Ritmo, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I have no problem, uh, you know, providing a floor plan at all, I actually have plans to have my architect come over there this week and you know, start working on some drawings, um, again, um, I don't mean to sound like a, like I'm repeating myself, like, it's more or less, I just, I just wanted to come with the six unit. See, see if it's, you know, something that you guys can foresee, and then, you know, if I plan on at least trying to put one more building there, like I guess, any any units I could get, really, um, and if if I couldn't get them, then, you know, I'd figure out another way to make this place work, but I, as of now, um, I believe the six units can work. Um, with with what the purchase price is and the foreseen construction costs. Obviously, I would, I would work with you guys as much as you want me to, to, um, you know, get you whatever you needed. Um, I'm just trying to basically figure out what you want from me, um, site-wise, and and for the internal of the building, um, so I can really kind of, you know, narrow down my, my cost for construction. Um, and then, you know, if you want, I can, you know, produce what I would plan on doing on the, in the future, if that would help make your decision, but at the same time, I don't think I mean, maybe I need the other buildings, but it's more or less just, you know, obviously, trying to maximize the property more than anything.
Yeah, well, what we can do is act on, as I always say, we can always only act on the application that's in front of us, and the application is for uh, the existing building to be turned into six apartments, uh, Mister Scribby Tennis's uh comment, though, uh, you know, you don't have to have an elaborate floor plan, you know, and spend a lot of money, you can sit down and draw it, draw it up, but we've seen those before, as long as it's detailed enough that we understand that you can get, get to the endpoint, is all, you know, is what we need to look for. The other thing you should also think about is, if if uh, if this board, this board may not be favorable for another building, especially if it may impact the neighborhoods uh neighborhood on the back there, but but, you know, another option would be in addition uh to the building, if there, if there is a way to do that, uh, and, you know, aesthetically, uh, and and economically uh, to gain apartments also, but that's, that's your call, again, you know?
Yep.
Mister Ritmo, did you at all look at a model where you would do demo new build on this site?
No, the numbers don't work. To demo that building, it doesn't work, unless you guys are gonna let me put a lot of units in there.
Define a lot, from your perspective?
Uh, I'd say at least twenty-four to thirty, which I don't believe you're gonna. I I would love it, I would love it if you did, but
I think that's actually what we heard from the last, um, person who was proposing apartments.
It was a twenty-four unit project.
He was gonna do a full tear down, that he needed that number of units, and that's why he walked away. And so I think one of the benefits of this proposal is, one, I think that building is actually slightly historical. So, leaving it and renovating it, like, he could work with the Architectural Review Board. Um, it's very low impact if you keep that building, and you're removing the buildings in the back that caused the nuisance. Low-impact construction, low-impact to neighbors, and good reuse of materials, if we're trying to do reuse, reuse, recycle. I do think that that is a benefit, to be using that existing building, it's kind of iconic for that corridor as well with those pillars.
Yeah, ju- just the point I want to make to the board is, I just want to make sure this is an attractive, long-term, multi-family rental that lasts, that's durable, that's attractive, that, you know, gets tenancy and is occupied, so I'm just be interested in looking at the fit up and some of the details. Entrance, egress, those are, those are relevant, because, again, what I know of this building, it uh, it looks like it could be challenging for terms of uh attracting tenants, but I leave that to Mister Ritmo.
Yeah, seems like the location'd be pretty good for, you know, attracting a tenant, sorry, you know, Clifton Park, uh, uh, Schenectady, Missy Unit.
Yeah, I mean, you got Knoll Atomic around the corner, it's around good stuff.
Yep, um, so, um, anybody else on the board, any any opinions or what your thoughts are? Um, we would have to make a recommendation again to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and and Mister Ritmo, it'd really be up to you to justify the the costs in order for them to um uh, see your way and grant the use variance, uh, and then you would come back to us if that was granted for the details, like the striping the parking, the number of parking spots, and maybe putting a, some kind of a curb delineation, so there's one way in or one one way out kind of thing, just to clean up the site a little bit. Um, but I can't see, you know, and as Laura mentioned, the code, whatever, uh, for apartments, anything in the code, you'd have to at least try to address, whether or not it's practicable or not, we at least have to try. And and then we would take it from there. Um, so I think, uh, you know, you've heard from a few of us, it seemed like, uh, um, it seems favorable. Anybody else want to add their thoughts?
Hey. I, I, Kevin, I, I just, I think it's good that we talked through all of the history and the reality of of the building being, being potentially historic or the look that we're all accustomed to seeing driving down Balltown Road. I, I kind of agree with the concept that six, this proposal may be the, the most best use considering the history with its prior use and historic. So I, I'm glad we talked through that. I, I want to say that those comments reflect where my mind's at. Very much so. And too many units would be probably even more than twelve, sixteen. In my recollection was they needed by twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four to, to redevelop the whole land with the other proposal. So it brings it back to keeping the same form factor and, and re, reconstructing it uh, for the use of six apartments. It does kind of seem like the least, uh, interruptive.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. Um, one other comment, Laura from the planning department on the application. Um, the, um, the, um, Mr. Ritmo did not, does not have a signature of the owner if different from the applicant. So I don't know if that's Mr. Pike or a, a subsidiary or whatever, but we need their approval for, uh, Mr. Ritmo to, uh, move forward with this application.
Yeah, it's Dr. Pike and Clark is working, um, on that signature with him. It's forthcoming. He, and like I said, I think he was actually interested in attending the meeting. I don't know that he made it tonight, but I mean, he's involved and cares and is paying attention, so.
Yep, yep. Your signature is required on the application or a letter or an email or something that says he's, it's okay for Mr. Ritmo to deal with this on his property.
Yeah, Clark's working on that, yep.
Okay. All right. So, uh, I guess if I could summarize for you, Mr. Ritmo, I think you have at least a quorum of the board that's, uh, uh, feels it could be an appropriate use for the property. Again, we're not the zoning board of appeals, so we're not into the financial, uh, realm and making a decision based on finances. Uh, our decision's more based on location, pre-existing use and concerns that we've had in the past and, uh, trying to make a piece of property feasible and to be, you know, maintained and, and, uh, functional, I guess, so. Um, uh, and I think you could also, uh, heard is that, you know, we're concerned about, uh, an expansion. Um, how many, uh, and whether or not, uh, how many would be too many if there were, you know, some of us might, might be okay with, you know, a four building unit. Uh, maybe not, but, but there's some risk there and you need to understand that. But otherwise I think you could get the support, uh, from this board, uh, to move forward, is what I'm hearing. And everybody can tell me if I'm wrong on that.
Sometimes silence is a good thing.
Yep. Sometimes.
Yeah. That's how I'm gonna take it. I'm gonna be optimistic.
There you go.
Yep.
All right, so next actions, Laura? Uh, you're on the mute, Laura.
Sorry, I mean, yeah, I, I would say that's, that, I mean, you heard, there's some support, I, I'm supportive changing the use to less intense and trying to make the economics on that property work and maintaining that building. Cause I do think that it's really, in my opinion, interesting part, and part of the Balltown corridor that's been there since I think nineteen-twenty, so. I'm definitely, I'm definitely supportive of keeping that building and trying to make a less intense use.
Right, and Mr. Ritmo still would have to, um, put together the, his justification for the use variance, all the paperwork required for the zoning board of appeals and have, make application to the zoning board of appeals and this board also would have the opportunity to take a look at that in order to make our recommendation.
Yeah, and so I think the way that ti- that timeline line, lines up is that we just finished the denial, denial was attached to the packet. So he would probably be looking at trying to get that denial in, you know, if not, you know, in the next couple of days, like potentially in October. So we'd be looking for recommendations in October, November, depending on what his timeline is. But at least we have a couple more meetings to be working on the recommendation. And so like, if you guys want to just think about, there's a couple of prongs in the comprehensive plan that I would think at, think about. You know, like what, you know, what the, what the, what the intent is for that Balltown Road quarter. But I mean, we talk about this all the time, like maintaining historical properties in some sense is definitely in the comprehensive plan. Um, so I don't know if you just want to page through and think about that as we're looking at things over the next meeting or two.
Yep. I see.
Oh, I did, yeah, Dr. Pike during the call, is there anything that you wanted to say to Dr. Pike?
Um, not really, except that I really wanted to go through. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. So, yeah, I mean, obviously I'd like this to go through. Obviously I think it's a, it's, it's not too much of a stretch for the town to, uh, grant some sort, something like this. Um, with the apartments, it seems like a good fit. Uh, I don't know, haven't spoken to the buyer personally, only spoken through my, um, agent here. But, you know, I think it's a lot, a lot better than barking dogs. And I think that's something that, you know, really the town should consider. I mean, there's already apartments upstairs. I don't think it's too much of a stretch to, I think, I, I, I think i- i- if, uh, if the buyer really is, is dedicated, is what my real estate agent's telling me that, you know, he's dedicating, making the, the building, restoring it to its, uh, prior glory and everything. I, I think it's a, it's a great fit. I mean, it's a lot less ambitious than what the last guy wanted to do, putting up, you know, huge apartment complexes, this guy, you know, this person is saying, and you guys weren't against that either. So it, it just seems like this is a much better fit than the alternative of, of, you know, bringing my dogs back down to, you know, my daycare dogs. That, that's about what's gonna fit right now or, or doing it as a, or using that as a secondary clinic or something. Because with it sitting there, I'm losing money every month. And I, I, I can't afford that, so I'm gonna have to use that property at some point if, if this isn't, if, if the town's not gonna be favorable for this, it seems like the town won't be favorable for anything, to be honest with you.
Okay. Well, Dr. Pike, thank you. And again, the ZBA is gonna be the authority here and the justification by the applicant for the use variance is really, uh, uh, you know, up to the applicant, uh, and we know, we'll help out the best we can. Uh, but it would be up to the ZBA to grant the use variance. All right?
I understand.
Anybody else? Yeah, so, but thank you, Dr. Pike, for joining us.
No, I'm sorry, I'm late.
No, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments or any questions from the applicant, Mr. Ritmo?
Um, no, I don't have any questions. I'm good.
Okay. So work on your, uh, you know, you got the denial letter, work on your justification for the use variance, uh, um, uh, you know, that'll be up to you and we'll get a copy of that and, um, we'll, we'll get a project lead assigned and we'll take a look at the comprehensive plan and, and put together our recommendations. Our recommendation is only board of appeals is based on three things. Um, whether or not it's, uh, in keeping with the comprehensive plan or moves the comprehen- comprehensive plan forward. Whether or not it's suitable, a suitable use for the area for which it's proposed and whether or not we think that the ZBA should grant the variance. And those are the three things that we pass on to the zoning board of appeals, but it's really up to them, okay? All right. Anything else on the subject? Okay, hearing nothing else, uh, then we'll, uh, you can work with the planning office and hopefully we'll see you at our next meeting on October fifth. Mr. Ritmo.
All right.
And everyone, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's it for discussion items, uh, on the agenda tonight. Uh, thanks Laura and Clark for your support there. Um, so we'll move to reports and that would be reports for, uh, the planning department and legal.
Yeah. Does anybody want to volunteer to be the project lead on the, on the Aqueduct Animal Hospital that wants to say it out loud now? Or do you want to email me later?
Yeah. Yeah, you can always email and carbon copy me and that'd be fine. At least somebody to lead the, you know, the discussion for the, uh, recommendations to the zoning board of appeals. And obviously I'll help out as always, um, but yeah, let us know. Do you have anything else under reports?
Yeah, so I have, um, three things really. Um, Clark has been working with an applicant for the old Niskiuna Town Hall on Balltown Road across from CBS. Um, we looked at putting a daycare in there, I think maybe a year, maybe two years ago, there ha- has been a daycare in that part of the building previously. Um, it was the, um, I think the Niskiuna Co-op daycare and they moved to the church there on Union Street and since then it's been vacant. Um, there's a new guy who's looking at the application, turn that into a daycare again. So, um, just be aware that that, they've been working with Clark on it and we'll probably see that in October. Um, I don't know if anybody has any initial thoughts or questions on that, but we have looked at it multiple times. And it ends up being, I think, just parking and drop off times is really what it comes down to in that area, unless there's something else. And I think the last time we looked at it, we said like, please, you know, spruce up, uh, some of the plantings, because some of the plantings there are looking a little old. Kind of spruce up what you can when you're doing that new tenant is what we typically do. Like if they're getting a tenant change, maybe we can address some of the things on that building that need some love.
Laura, is that the same applicant as when we had to walk through several months ago with pre-COVID?
Not the same applicant. I believe that the owner is the same. When we did that walkthrough, he had said that he was, he, he knew that there was a daycare interested, but he didn't think that they were gonna take all of the space. And he was interested in doing, um, office co-share. But this applicant wants to take all of the space and so I'm not sure where that leaves the facade upgrades and stuff that we talked about, but I think they're still very relevant. So what I, you know, it, that building obviously is very easy to become all daycare again. That's what it was. That's what it's set up for when we did that walkthrough. It has all those rooms and everything already set up. So I mean, I don't really see that, foresee that as a big problem. But I do think that we don't want to necessarily let go of some of those things that we had talked about during that walkthrough. At least that's my opinion.
Yep. Yeah, thank you.
And then the other thing that I wanted to tell you guys was that the JCC sign was installed on Balltown Road. The, um, it's got a message right now that is not scrolling or changing. Um, it's got a white background with black letters. My initial intake feedback is I think it's too bright. I think that we, I mean, you guys go drive by and take a look. I think it's probably gonna be slightly less impact to the neighborhood if we switch it to black with white letters. Um, and that's just a drive-by, take a look, but we're probably gonna want to set up a time where the project leads and Kevin and whoever else wants to go out there, takes a look at it at night and we set the, the levels. So in our approval, we said two, two, uh, I think two weeks after it was installed, we would go out and take a look at what the nighttime levels were and decide where we're gonna set that and then write a memo and incorporate it into the final resolution. So, um, I'm just gonna send out dates to you guys and see what works for you for a nighttime visit to the JCC sign. But, I mean, feel free to drive by and let me know. It's not, it's not a technical requirement to say, but I think if we generally speaking think that it's gonna be less light and problematic to have the black background, maybe we should have them try it for a couple of days as well.
Yeah, Laura, I drove by it and, um, I had a little trouble reading it. I don't know if it was the white background versus the black lettering or if it was the size of the lettering, it, the lettering even seemed a little small.
I think so too. It's small and short. Yeah, and that makes me think, because it doesn't look a lot like their test sign that they showed in the town hall. Um, but yeah, I agree with you. It's hard to read. I wonder if they swap it, if it would look better.
Yeah, great. Yeah, did you have a third thing, Laura, or was that three?
Oh, yeah. My third thing was, um, obviously we did not put the Kelch Farm, um, emergency development on tonight. We're still working with the fire chief on what the requirements for the emergency access are and we had a request on some of the neighbors to sort of set it a roundtable and hear all those things. So my next step is to do a roundtable with all the kind of involved parties, legal, you know, um, fire chiefs, a couple of residents, anybody from the planning board who wants to be there and just sit down with some maps, figure out, you know, what the fire chief needs, what a standard bike path is, like how much we're asking to add, like just kind of get a general sense from everybody, like where we land. And then I think we would bring that proposal back to the planning board. So I didn't want to put it on the planning board when we're, it's still in flux. Um, so I just wanted to let you know, hopefully we'd have it back on October fifth, um, if we can just work through some of those details.
But Laura, we're waiting to hear back from, uh, District Two, Fire District Two, right?
Yeah, so. I mean, just the initial, like there was an initial cross-section on the bike path. And initially, you know, the fire chief said that that's not, it's not strong enough to hold a fi- it's not strong enough to hold a truck. Um, so you would definitely have to make it slightly bigger and stronger underneath, which I don't think is a problem. But, um, I think we just want to look at what the specs are for a normal bike path, like where, you know, where we're going, like how uncomfortable we're making everybody and just kind of find that balance, get that conversation and then come back with a plan that hopefully works for everybody.
I don't mind saying that, you know, for me, the first question is, you know, I would, I would contact Fire District Two Chief and the first question is, if the bike path could handle a vehicle, can you use it for emergency access? That's, and that's yes or no. And you know, and then we could take it from there. Uh, I don't think we need to have a roundtable to get an answer to that question. Um, and, and, and if he doesn't want to answer that, well, you know, we could set a meeting. But, uh, that's the first question, you know, because if the, if the bike path is capable at, at a bike pa- pa- path of width, which is I believe is ten foot, and it's just a matter of, uh, you know, in, making sure the subbase is okay, that, you know, it could be a very simple solution and we could be done with everything, you know?
Uh, yeah.
But, but I would reach out to the Fire District Two and let, you know, it's have some conversation. I don't think we need to, you know, blindside everybody and have the conversation at a meeting, we, we can.
Yeah, and I agree. Yeah. Like what are, what, what is the absolute minimum? Like what does that mean for the bike path? Is there somewhere else that we can put it that the county would say yes to? Those are kind of the three questions that we're looking at. Yeah.
All right.
Still working, still a work in progress.
Yep. And has Joel's, uh, done any work where he's, uh, updated the site, uh, map based on the feedback, you know, that we provided, like relocating that lot? Have you seen anything on that at all yet?
That hasn't been submitted to us yet, no. And that may just be because we're still working on the emergency access.
Right. But I mean, if, you know, yeah, right, but if there are some engineering details, uh, if he starts moving forward, we can start some engineering though, right? That may not be dependent on the emergency access as far as, you know, uh, placement of homes or whatever, so.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't received an updated site plan since the last meeting.
That was, that was my only question for you tonight, anyway. Great, Laura, thank you. You have anything else or does legal have anything? No?
Did anyone have an answer to my question that I emailed about the, uh, the abomination that is in the center of our town right now?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact question, but I, but I think the word was that, you know, the developer is just gonna leave the site the way it is. Um, but I reached out to him and that's not the case. I mean, he did put up the thing that says, you know, this, this, this project is on pause, but essentially the framing is on pause. Um, they're still doing site work and like where he would leave it by the end of this fall would be that they would have rough grading of the entire site. Um, seeded and stabilized and the foundation covered. So that the project would either proceed in the spring with framing if the cost of wood went down or he would sell it. Um, but you're not gonna, but it's not going to be, you know, um, just completely abandoned as of tomorrow. He's still working on it and he's gotta get it to a, he's going to get it to a point where, um, you know, it can be seeded and look relatively nice, I think, until something happens to it. You know, in the spring, but I don't think that you could expect any framing until the spring.
Yeah, I just don't understand how we can basically not know what the price of lumber was gonna be. I, I just think that, that there's gotta be some way by which we have a lot of, not a lot, there's just periodically developers who take advantage of the town and lack of enforcement mechanisms and these things happen and it's really, it makes us as a planning board look bad.
So I know it's super frustrating, but this is not the only project that is suffering from the, I mean, I'm gonna say skyrocketing cost of wood. It's very unusual situation that I think happened with COVID. Um, deck builders are putting a lot of their decks on hold. Um, and I know that, I mean, Amador has been struggling with the cost of wood. Single-family home builders are struggling with the cost of wood right now. Um, they added over four hundred thousand dollars of cost to that project, which was, I mean, I don't know that you could ever foresee what happened with COVID and the cost of wood. It's totally bizarre. Like one, like one two by four that would normally be like, I don't know, four dollars is now like thirty. And that's just something that's very unusual. I mean, I'm not downplaying that it's unfortunate for the town, but I think in this situation, a little quarter can be given because I don't think that anybody would have had a crystal ball with this. And he was proceeding, you know, with the intention of trying to get people in that apartment by spring. So I, I mean, I don't know that this is a thumb in your face planning board. I think this is something that was just unfortunate for everyone. Just my opinion, but.
Great, thanks Laura. And, uh, uh, sounds like legal doesn't have anything, so that's it for reports tonight, Laura?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so go move on to commission business. Now just go down the list as usual. Uh, Mr. Oster, you have anything else for us tonight?
I, I do not.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Mr. Dear. Okay, thank you, sir. And Mr. Diopino?
No, nothing tonight.
Thanks. Mr. McPartland?
Um, I was just wondering if, um, Laura, you wouldn't mind, um, providing any update? If there is anything to report on the neighborhood mixed-use, um, code? That, I think where we last left it, it was, we were, we were looking at having, um, some, some schematics drawn up either by engineering students or some kind of engineer. Um, did that ever, did that ever move forward? I'm just curious where we left that.
Um, do you mean the neighborhood mixed-use or the OD Heck complex, which was, um, was that its name? Is that what its name is? Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's what the name is. Um, that kind of fell off the radar. And I'm not saying it's not, but, um, yeah. Because we even had a task force that was, that I could still reach out to and say, hey, can, can, can you come back? Um, yeah, at some point I need to start that up again.
So you, you identified people, um, who could, uh, work on it, work on some code for that, um, that is owned?
Yeah, the, I mean, I still think that it's important to do it, but I think that the incent, the incentive, again, was that it, we felt like there was maybe some movement on that property and we wanted to get out, out in front of it. Um, that movement did not pan out, but I still think that we should do it, because you never know when, you know, any kind of movement's gonna happen. And that, getting that code the way that we want it and having that vision for that property is really important. It is a large section of our town.
Yeah, Mr. McPartland, I was, I was on that committee. And I think we had started to look at what would be appropriate uses for mixed-use. And we had a draft plan, probably like three pages long of different information and uses we thought we could use to write an outline spec to give to an architect or an urban planner and have them basically develop a forty or fifty acre parcel and create, you know, what would happen if OD Heck wasn't there. And we took that parcel and inserted an entirely new mixed-use, um, neighborhood into Niskiuna. But we haven't met for, it's probably been at least a year.
At least a year.
I can go back. I can go back and look at my notes, but.
I think it's probably at least a year. And I think one of the things that we kind of ran up against is we did a site tour. And, um, those, and we've said this before, those buildings are just very hard to take down. They're like concrete silos and I, just the, the costs to, that the state is incurring right now, even just to, to get the insides and reconfigure the insides is so high. It's just, it's, I think it's hard to envision a project that could come out on top by taking those buildings down. And then it's like, if you leave the buildings and you reuse them, where does that leave you to? It is a difficult site.
Yep. But it's a worthy effort, obviously, to, to, you know, get out ahead of it in case someday things change. So we'll have to put it on our to-do list to pick that back up sooner or later.
Yeah. And I definitely think that it's probably useful to do two versions. One is a completely clean site, you know, with what we would realistically love to see there. And then another would be if you really can't take very many of the buildings down, like what's the adaptive reuse and what's the land that can be developed around it? Because I think the state was interested in kind of getting rid of some of the land that didn't have buildings on it. But if you look at it, you know, it's got, like, some of it's got a pond and stuff. So really what is the additional stuff that you can add there that would, you know, make it a more of a neighborhood mixed-use complex? So having those two scenarios is probably important.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. McPartland, anything else, sir?
No, none, nothing else. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Khan?
Thank you.
And Mr. Scrubby Tennis? Nothing. So Laflamme?
No, sir. Thanks.
All right. Ms. Gold?
Nothing. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Ms. Shenfield?
No, nothing for me.
Yep. And I actually have nothing further for tonight. So actually, uh, everybody gets a couple hours off tonight if I can get a motion to adjourn, of course.
Motion.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Khan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oster. I saw hands in the, well, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, hearing no one opposed, we'll adjourn the, uh, September fourteenth, 2020 meeting at, uh, eight eighteen. It looks like I can get my glasses to work right. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.